Okay, hello everyone, welcome to the Stevens Memorial Library Board of Trustees Meeting, Monthly Meeting. I need to read this governor rule. So bear with me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A 18 and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 Order Imposing Strict Limitation on the Number of People That May Gather in One Place, this meeting of the North Andover Board of Library Trustees will be conducted via remote participation for members of the public. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirements to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast or Verizon Channel or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So we can call the meeting to order at 5:04. With a roll call, I'll start with myself, Ian Kavanaugh, present.
Stan Levert, present.
Mark Rogers, present.
Okay.
Earl Smitsen, present.
Mary.
Mary Desha, present.
Bill Duffy, present.
Eva, did you go?
Yes.
Oh. Then everyone, and then we also have Kathleen Keenan, the director.
Cindy, here.
Okay, Cindy.
Cindy is here.
And Dee Casey. She's here. Okay, Cindy, was there any public comment made?
No, there was not, no public comment.
Okay. Um, okay, then we'll jump right in. There is something from the MBLC, from the state, the new trustees' pocket guide. And we have, I mean, most of us have a fairly recent copy, but Kathleen's going to request five to have on hand. And I'll let Kathleen talk about the next few things.
The Board of Library Trustees has notified us that they're sending everything by email. There won't be any paper mail. And so all of you should be registered to receive email. The main address on it or the subject heading will say mass trustees, and it's a distribution list that's going to all trustees. So the two most recent emails that would be of interest, besides the trustees, which mentions that they're planning more orientation sessions, so as you add them to the board, you can request orientation. They're sending messages about the state aid program and what the criteria was for this current year and the fact that they have been, in fact, able to certify 294 of the Massachusetts libraries, including Stevens. So while many things in COVID have slowed down, they're still managing to keep up with the process. So the good news is that we've received notice that we will be receiving our state aid award. The first payment will be coming hopefully sometime in March, and their estimate is that we will be receiving a payment of about $23,000. That all things going the way they planned, there will be a second payment before June, and the second payment would be another $23,000. So this year, you could actually expect to receive $46,000 in state aid. Was very good news. So my one request to you always is if you're not getting these emails from the trustees list, from the Board of Library Commissioners, should let me know so we can find out why they're not getting their mail through to you, or maybe check your spam folders.
I get them.
So that... So the changes to the policies for the... That Mary Rose sent. It sounds like it actually, I mean, is that more than we were hoping or expecting?
Yes. One of the things that happened was that once the state managed to vote in their budget, because the budget this year was, you know, further behind in time and process, that the lines in the state budget for supporting public libraries actually got an increase. So their estimate was about a 20% increase over last year. So last year, we received about $35,000 in state aid. So that wasn't, not only nice that we're getting it, but actually that there were more funds than we would have predicted.
Do you think that was because of COVID and that libraries, like, provided even more of a service almost?
I would hope so, but the whole process of how the state supplies a budget or creates a budget and decides to fund it is probably more complicated than that. But I think that people have done a really good job of letting the state government members know how important public libraries have been during COVID, and that should certainly have played into it. But one of the other messages that I... You should have received was about the Valentine's Program, where they ask people to send Valentines into the Board of Library Commissioners. This year, it's through the website. All of those will be used on the Massachusetts Library Legislative Day as part of their awareness program to take in through the state legislatures before they vote next budget to say, here's the demand coming from the public, from the citizens.
How long can you submit them, do you know?
I think normally it's to the end of February. Sometimes they leave the site up a little bit longer. So we sent a reminder out to people that there was still time because it's only the 23rd of the month.
Well, I did send, you saw my email, I did try to, I did it twice, it'll probably show up twice. Oh, Stan's waiting to come into the meeting.
Yep, we'll let Stan back. So I did check because I put something up and I didn't see it. And they told me that it goes into a queue. They do have somebody who looks at the emails and admits them. We wanted to make sure they did.
Yeah.
The emails that had pictures.
To make sure it was appropriate.
Yes, no special pictures on the library site was their answer. It might take a while to get there, but they should be coming.
Well, so if anyone else, it's really pretty quick, you just have to upload, you can use their form or you upload it, so. Go for it. So reports. So some of the assignments. Stan and I are still working on long-range planning, updating that, and trying to tie in the town master plan stuff. But Mary, would you like to give your update on the 501(c)(3) status?
Sure, can you guys hear me? Just as way of background, we started talking about a 501(c)(3) entity, maybe about a couple of years ago or so. And we know that, like, across the state of Massachusetts, there's probably about 370 or so libraries, and 82% of them are blessed to have friends groups who do a lot of fundraising on behalf of libraries, and they are able to, you know, pull together different sorts of events and speaker series and things that the library might not be able to afford with just money allocated from the town or the government. There's probably about 30% of the libraries in the state which have a separate foundation, and those are designed to finance more big-ticket items. If renovations have to be done to the library or furniture or something of that nature. And it was really in response to a lot of towns having to pull back on their budgets for the library. So these foundations were created to sort of manage that delta between what was budgeted and the needs of the library. So given that the trustees are, as Bill has so eloquently said, were an unincorporated association. A lot of other libraries are either, the trustees are appointed by either the government or they are by virtue of their status in the community. For example, some bylaws say that you have to be on the school committee, or you have to be part of like a religious organization in the community. So we have like all these different kinds of groups and what the governance looks like, you know, which had us sort of scratching our heads as to, well, what would, what would this 501(c)(3) look like? Would it be separate and distinct from the trustees? Or would it be just sort of like a shell in which it would be like a pass-through entity that would collect the money and then write a check at the end of the year to the trustees? There's also like a housekeeping component to this in that there's probably, you know, with respect to the investment accounts, that there's some consideration there as to having a separate identification number and management of those. But having gone to a number of MBLC seminars and having gone to the Cary Library as a gift of Bill, who was so gracious to introduce us to the foundation manager there, it just seems to be that there are, with respect to, like, you could talk to a number of different libraries and still, everybody has sort of like a different way of approaching it. So we finally just sort of thought, you know, it probably makes sense to get some, to get some, maybe some legal advice into, you know, what this would actually look like, you know? So to that extent, I had reached out to some colleagues, and the name of Hemingway &amp; Barnes, which is a Boston law firm, came up. Apparently, they've done this a lot, and they could certainly advise us. And it might make sense at this point to just sort of like push this a little bit further along, you know, for consideration. But I didn't want to reach out to anybody without first maybe having a discussion with the board as to maybe any concerns that there might be. There's certainly going to be an expense associated with it, and I guess there should be a conversation as to what we're comfortable with, you know, just to maybe hear back from folks, what they think about this.
It's important to move forward in forming this 501, or 50, whatever it's called.
501(c)(3).
So it's a 501(c)(3). So Stan had actually said, you know, why don't we, and I don't know if this is possible, but there are four other libraries in the state where the Board of Trustees is the entity that is the 501(c)(3). Those libraries include, it's Haverhill, the library in Northampton, the library in Salem, and the city of Boston. So it's not entirely out of the range of possibility. Again, that's something that, you know, that a lawyer could advise us of, you know, that, you know, again, we're an unincorporated association. So, you know, do we need to be incorporated? Do we, you know, what are the, what are the criteria that will get us to where we want to be?
That makes sense. I think that we had talked about, I think for a lot of reasons, it may make a lot of sense for us because of the way we're set up and our endowment and all of that. And I think we definitely need some legal advice.
Yeah, I agree.
And I can certainly vouch for Hemingway &amp; Barnes, having dealt with them, with the Historical Society, very reputable, very competent. I would certainly trust their opinion on this matter if that's the way we want to go. Mary, how would we find out from them kind of a, sort of a rough idea of what the expense might be to do this, or at least to look into this?
You know, so that, I think that's a fair question. I don't think lawyers are shy about talking about money, you know, and, you know, the key would be, you know, is this project-based or is this something where, you know, you're going to be racking up billable hours? You know, but I certainly think that's, that's part of the first conversation. It's like, you know, what is your experience with our type of an organization? Would you, you know, would you advocate just having the trustees themselves, you know, that entity, that, you know, B-O-L-T, you know, be the 501(c)(3), or do we need a separate entity? And that really sort of, you know, how do you, you know, what does that look like? I mean, do you have, can you put board members on that separate entity, or, you know?
Or are we all members of that separate entity, right? We the seven members of the board?
Right.
So a couple of things. First is, you know, as the, because when we had discussed this, as you now put it, years ago, I went ahead and went out and got us our own EIN, tax ID.
Right.
So we, the trustees, have our own tax ID, and that seemed like that was the first step in this process. You had to have that to even apply for a 501(c)(3). So that was step number one, and there, you know, that seemed easy enough to do. Nobody, that didn't seem to be hard, and there weren't any hard questions to answer. The, you know, historic, just to sort of, sort of to let us all recall, the two reasons why this is, this was an issue was, number one, we could have been a 501(c)(3) in the past, but weren't. So when monies came in to get the tax exemption, they needed to go someplace where they, you know, donors could get the tax exemption, and the only place at the time that that was possible was with the town. So our monies were given to the town as a tax-exempt organization, and they have retained it ever since. Secondly, you know, we, this, the issue had come up a couple of years ago about investments, and whether or not we were, because the, our, the money, our funds are being held by the town, whether or not the investments are in fact being done according to state law. And the answer is they're not. They're not being done, if you will, legally. They're, they don't meet the letter of the law for the investments, for money that's being held by a municipal organization, which was another strong motivation, I think, for us to want to establish a 501(c)(3) and have a place to move those funds once we had made that happen. So I think those are a couple of reasons. First is have a place where people can donate money to the trustees and get a tax exemption. And two, to have a place where we can keep our endowment and not have it encumbered by the rules that the town has to use for its funds.
Right, hence the housekeeping part of it.
Correct.
I agree, we need to move forward on this. I have been involved in the creating and maintaining a 501(c)(3) for a small, smaller nonprofit organization. But I think Mary raises a good, a few good points about why we probably need, you know, some legal advice, given, you know, some of the things Stan you just mentioned.
I certainly agree, and I think Hemingway &amp; Barnes is the, is the perfect group to help us with that. I would have complete confidence in whatever opinions they were to render on this matter, so.
This feels like a project-based assignment, but I defer if I've got it wrong.
No, I know what you mean.
Providing us with guidance and setting up the legalities of the 501(c)(3). But I'm not, you know, there might be ongoing questions, but I wouldn't, it's not a gig, right? It's really one shot.
It's not.
Exactly, I think it's kind of, right, like, you go to have like a will or an estate that's more project-based. That's the way I kind of view this, but I am not that certain, you know? And again, you know, I think we should probably put a cap on it just so that, you know, we all feel comfortable with it. And, I mean, the good news is that Bill has done so much of the legwork on this. We have the collection of the bylaws and, and sort of like everything that went into the formation, the granting of the land and the building to the town and the town's vote, you know, to accept it. And so we have all of that stuff. We don't have to do any deep digging. And I think they can pretty much probably, you know, with their experience, I think they can roll something out relatively quickly. The only, the only hangup is that the IRS will take some time to approve it. But again, it's not, it's not an issue of, you know, are they taking time to approve what we're doing? I mean, clearly, the mission of this group has been a charitable purpose all along. So we're just asking for, you know, to kind of like have the blessing of the IRS.
Well, Mary, do you think it would be appropriate at this point for us to make a motion to set aside a certain amount of money to start this discussion with Hemingway &amp; Barnes? Or do you want to have that discussion first, and then we'll do something?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I didn't want to go start, you know, start something without having some insight into if anybody has any concerns, or if there are any particular things that I should be discussing, you know, with them. And I did want to get a ballpark figure for, you know, the amount and what, you know, if we're within a negotiating, you know, stance with them or whatever.
Right.
Is there a way to find out, like, kind of like a ballpark from them? Or, and then we could like vote on it at the next meeting? Or should we kind of come up with a number ourselves, make a motion, like, we'll, you know, comfortable spending like X amount of money on this?
I'm more than happy to reach out. I just, you know, like, maybe, yeah, I mean, it's fine. Let me just reach out, and then I can, I can circulate something. I just hate to keep, like, waiting.
Yeah, I think getting a ballpark first would be better, because otherwise, we might come, you know, we might throw a number out tonight and find out it's way off base, revisit it again. That would be my opinion.
Well, and if it's really huge, then maybe we want to try to find somebody else.
Yeah.
What did you say the name of the firm was?
Hemingway.
So it's Hemingway.
Oh, Hemingway.
Which is H-E-M-E-N-W-A-Y.
By the way, you know, we're non-charitable. Isn't there pro bono work from these?
I know, right? Wouldn't that be great?
Yeah, that's what they all say, right?
Well, I had to say it.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So are there any particular things that are of concern for anybody, or are we good to go? If I just call him up, then?
You know, the two issues that I had mentioned are the ones that I, you know, want to make sure they understand what is, you know, that we need to have.
And that's on my radar.
Yeah, so that's all, I'm good.
I guess my only question is, like, I'm curious as to why so many, is it because of the way our board is set up and the way it was designed at the very beginning? Or, you know, why are there, what'd you say, like, so many of them have, well, I guess he's, what did you say, 85% of friends groups, and then?
Right, so.
30% have fundraising, separate fundraising groups, like foundations.
What I think it is, it's not, it's not, not in a bad way, but if you're, if you're sort of like a trustee group that is appointed by the government, then you have the same constraints on contracting as the government does. But if you have a foundation, you can negotiate a little bit. You don't have to put everything out for a bid so that it allows some of these other libraries that are more government-oriented to, you know, to contract differently. You know, if they want to put an addition on, they don't have to put each and every thing out for a bid, or they don't have to meet a lot of the, you know, the, you know, the government criteria for that. So there's a little bit of a loophole in there.
Yeah, so Mary, are we considered government-appointed, or are we self-appointed?
So if you look at the way the MBLC breaks it down, we submit as being self-perpetuated. And there are only 58 other libraries that characterize themselves as that, which, you know, a small percentage, but.
Yeah, well, I agree kind of with Stan in that, you know, a couple key issues are the fact that our, our investments, it's not clear whether they sit with the town or sit with the trustees, you know, that's kind of that gray area. And I think one thing we're trying to do here is clarify that, but also allows for the flexibility of, you know, the investment portfolio that we've had for years. So, you know, and that's done us well. I think we want to continue that way.
Well, and if they have a lot of experience with this, then they can maybe kind of steer us in the right direction, like, oh, no, you don't want to do it like that because of this or that, you know? Like, they may be able to point out pros and cons.
My sense is, I mean, I think the first question is, you know, can we, as a board, you know, given, given everything, you know, can we just get the 501(c)(3) for ourselves, you know? Or do we need to create like a separate vehicle to sort of like have that designation? And it may be that, it may be that we could just be one of those, you know, one of those trustee boards that has it for ourselves.
Right.
Because having a separate foundation, that seems to me like, I mean, kind of tough. Then you have to get a whole set of people.
Exactly, so the only reason, if you look at the Cary Library, they have about 30 trustees, and I suspect that they're, a large group of them, you know, do what we do. They, they sort of like give consideration to things other than fundraising, budgeting, you know, long-term goals, you know, planning, strategizing. For some people, that's really all they want to do. They just want to fundraise, you know, and they, they're happy without having to worry about the administrative part of things. So they're more than happy to be on a foundation and, you know, you know, reaching out to people and sort of guiding them, you know, on how to make a gift to the library. You know, so it, in that, if you've got folks that are interested in doing that, that's great. But I'm just not sure whether, you know, we can find enough people, you know, with that kind of a background or that kind of a motivation to staff this thing either.
Yeah, I think that sounds.
Well, why, Mary, why don't you reach out? Well, well, why, Mary, why don't you reach out to the law firm and so they'd see if you can get some idea of what the cost might be? And then, you know, maybe get some ideas of how, how they might be able to advise us. And then we can talk about it again on this meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
I think that sounds good. All right. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah. And before we move on.
Yep.
Can we go back to long-range planning for just a second?
Sure. Well, that's coming up in the committee.
Okay. Oh, sorry, sorry. I thought we had already done that. Okay, I'm good.
No, I just, okay, I, I kind of brought it up out of order.
Okay, sorry.
So, um, Will, oh, okay, Kathleen, you want to talk about the, your stuff?
Yes.
Director Report.
So, um, two things about the building. The contract was signed with Waterfield Design to work on the, the engineering design for the historic entrance steps. The engineers have actually been in for their first visit and Steve Foster is supplying them with the blueprints. So the work is actually started. Goal of course is to have the engineer design done fairly soon so that it could go out for construction bid sometime this spring. Again, with the hope that this can be, if not a summer project, then maybe it's a project in the fall, which would be very good. Because the, the money funding this comes from the Community Preservation Act and it was voted last year. But it's already in hand, so we do not need to wait for July 1st to start spending the funds, for instance, which in other years we had to wait, you know, for their budget year to roll over. But this is already funded and, and ready to go. The second thing is that we did have a leak last week. It came in just one area. Steve Foster and Rick Bacardi were up on the roof and it was an ice dam in a gutter. I still don't have a really good understanding of why some of the water got in. It is definitely not a problem with the new EPDM flat roof. And so as Steve Foster said, it's definitely not a warranty issue. That being said, I don't understand exactly how it did work. The, the good news is that the water came in a very narrow area. It did not affect very much. So we lost a few ceiling tiles. And the one shelf where it came in, it came in on the books on CD, which are all plastic. And so we wiped them all dry and we're all done. So, um, were we talking to Steve some more? We're supposed to have a company come in to look at the clay tiles when the weather is getting better. And so when they're in, we will be asking them to just look at that area as, as well. One of the things that we all know, if you've lived with ice dams, is that somehow ice dams find ways in that nobody ever thought there was a way to walk in the place. It's, they, they told me this is standard for New England. It shouldn't be too distressing. The second thing is that the, the 22 budget was presented to the town manager and she reviewed it, of course, and presented to the select board, their new name. Now, can you hear me okay? It's really scratchy on my end.
We can hear you fine.
Okay. So while there were some differences in the line items, the, we did agree on the bottom line, the total for the budget. Um, and it's as the total is shown in the budget book. So I'm feeling, feeling good about it. It looks like you have a budget that's presentable and dependable and will be going forward presumably with the support from Town Hall. Right? My computer's trying to update something in the middle of this. It's constant machines. The other thing I wanted to mention about, uh, was the personnel. So we have a quarterly staff meeting for all staff members and it was last week on Wednesday. And we decided to have something that was a little bit fun and cheerful as to start the staff meeting. And we had a speaker come in who is a chemist and talked about chocolate and why it's so good for you. So with the program, we bought some Lindt choc- chocolate truffles. So everybody had chocolates to sample while the chemist was telling us why it was good for us to eat it. He did, of course, say eat it in moderation. So I want to thank the trustees. I had submitted the expense to Anne and Earl ahead of time and it was, I think, under $200. So they went ahead and approved me doing that. And the staff really did like it. There's nothing like somebody handing you a, a handful of chocolate to make your day start better. Our services are starting to pick up a little bit again. The visitors are back in the building. We're sticking still with our fairly conservative schedule of how many people at one time. People are making appointments and as things continue to get better, we can lengthen those hours. And we're starting to look at having the staff back in the building longer on Saturday and on Sunday. So they would still be doing remote support, but instead of doing it from their house, now they'll be doing it, doing it in the building. So answering phones and email and then also trying to have those programs on Sunday afternoons. And I already mentioned the very good news about the state certification and the nice amount of money it looks like we're going to get. So I'll turn that over to, um, back to Anne and Earl.
That's good news. Okay. Oh, am I muted?
No, you're here, you're here.
Okay, um, that's, I'm so excited about that state aid and I'm glad that the staff was happy with that chocolate now. And that the appointments are starting to happen. I kind of feel like the light's at the end of the tunnel. Anyways, um, Earl, do you want to?
Sure.
With your treasure report?
Sure, just a quick note, speaking of light at the end of the tunnel. I was able to get into the library building to perform some of my treasurer functions and got to see the new lighting. So if you haven't been in the library since they installed the new lights, you'll be blinded when you enter. It, it, it really looks nice, you know, frightens the place up quite a bit.
Nice.
So on to treasurer's report. So starting out, um, I've, I show 12 months, so for the investment report. I wanted, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, I've, I've done it differently month to month. So I think sticking to 12 month, looking 12 months back, uh, is probably the best way to show our investment report. So there's a chart in there that shows, again, the big dip when COVID started, but it's been pretty much uphill since then, which is good news. Following the chart of the balances for each, uh, month up till February 19th is when I was able to prepare the report. Following that are the checks, uh, that have been written and I used, I think this is the town fiscal year. I, I used July, uh, 20, well, 2020 to current day for the checks. So you can see the individual checks in their, uh, category of spending. Following that is, uh, a summary of the categor- categorized spending that we've done. So today we've done out of the checking account roughly $8,600 in spending. We've had one transfer in from finality of 5,000 to maintain our checking account balance. And then I, I may not do this all the time, but this month I added, due to our discussion last, at our last meeting about, you know, changing the, uh, allocations of our investments, et cetera. I put in a, a chart and a table that shows the account balance at the end of every year. In this case, it was, uh, a calendar year, uh, which makes it easier to compare with some, financial statements from, uh, in general. Uh, we can use calendar year results that are shown in the Wall Street Journal, et cetera. So that shows, um, you know, that we've, uh, we continue to have a great performance in a way. It's, it keeps going up, but, um, I think we need to keep in mind that our, our new, uh, budget spending policy will probably make that chart look a little different. Because on average, for the last five or six years, we've spent $10,000 per year or less. And, uh, based on our vote last, at the last meeting, we're, we're talking about budget, budgeting 35,000 per year. So that's my report. If anybody has any questions or would like to add a different level of detail to any report, let me know, please.
Earl, the quick question for you. On the graph, there are, there's a key, but there's no, I can't see any explanation for what the key means.
Uh, let me see if I can.
This is the year-over-year chart?
Uh, so the 2015, 16, 17, that one?
That's the one, right?
Yeah. I, I, well, the, the red is the net, um, the brown is the investments and the orange is, uh, I believe negative balances. But I, I can give you a little more detail on that offline if you want.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's not a lot. I thought maybe it was a checking account balance or something like that, but.
Yeah, let me get back to, you know, the, what I'm really trying to show here was the totals. To give you an idea that back in 2014, we started out with 691,000 and today we have over 900,000.
Right. So, you know, if it, if it tracks to the table on the following page, it's the checking account balance.
Yeah.
As of that date.
That may be.
That makes sense.
Yeah. But as, again, as I said, if we change our spending, uh, annual spending, that's going to make that chart probably not quite as steep. And hopefully not negative.
Right.
Yeah, and through you, Mark, actually, if you want, um, you know, I can track, but I know you're in the middle of reallocating the different funds.
Yeah, I just took the first step.
Yeah, um, you know, that chart can be broken up into many colors, one for each, uh, investment fund. So if you want to get to that level of detail, that's fine.
Okay. Um, that might graphically show, or at least a bond versus equity allocation. That way you have two colors and that way you could begin to see the, the percent of the asset allocation change over time.
Yeah.
That might be helpful, but otherwise, otherwise to judge the performances of those funds.
Okay, thank you. That looks good. The, well, we could go right into the investment committee then, Mark.
Sure. So I, I wanted to make mention, this is Mark, so, um, that, that I began the asset rebalance per the instructions of the board from the last meeting, which was to move in the direction of an 80, 80, 20 equity to bond allocation, asset allocation over six quarters. So, uh, and there will be, um, I intend to basically start, start from scratch each quarter because the asset allocation will actually change naturally by investments, some doing well and some doing not as well. So what, what I did basically was to take the, the, the total balance that would need to bring the funds in line to 80, 20 and divided that target into six, one-sixth. And I sold enough bonds to fit that one-sixth and will purchase the equities as soon as the proceeds of that go into the sweep account. And, uh, and I will target what I thought I would do. There's a couple of things we can do and we should talk about this. I could immediately leave the, the $35,000 in the remaining sweep account, which would then be transferable or actually be a little less than that, um, because we've already spent 8,000. So, it, and so we'd have that liquid funds. We've sold, we've sold the assets anyway. We don't want to invest and then sell again because now we're just incurring fees. But it all depends on how, how soon we anticipate using those funds. The other thing that I can do is go ahead and reinvest that in, uh, immediately. And then change some of the dividend, instead of dividend reinvestments, we can change them into sweeping the dividends into the cash account. And there's no, there's no fee for that. So it's actually a cash efficient way of putting money into our checking account, so to speak. So that would be my preferred way of doing this, but it's a little less predictable. And depending on when we would need additional funds, we might not have the balance and we would have to sell, which would be fine. Um, it's not, there are large fees, but I just wanted to let you know there are a couple of different ways to manage that particular, um, transaction. So I'll, I'll do that. I'll mark that. I'll wait another, um, another quarter and do the next sixth and keep that going until we hit the 80, 20 rule over the course of the, the six quarters.
Sorry.
The other thing, any questions on that before I go to the next item? So that was just in reaction to the vote from the last meeting.
Well, I think it makes sense to do that, to, to, instead of reinvesting those dividends, just kind of let them build up.
I would agree. I, you know, I think given our historical spending and what we're talking about spending, I, I don't think that's going to turn on a dime. In other words, it's going to take us a while to, to get to the spending level.
So what I'll do then is when I do the reinvestment in the equity accounts, it will, I'll, I'll just make sure I make a handful of changes to the dividend. I'll be able to get the dividend amounts and then we'll, we'll see the run rate of that. And that could also include just interest from bonds, um, that would go into the sweep account until such time as it hits our target. And then I would change the allocation to go back into reinvestment. So it, it's not something that happens precipitously, so it's easy to manage. Any other questions on that?
Nope. That sounds like a good plan and, um, logical.
The next item I just wanted to mention is, and I, and it should not be for discussion today because the, um, the, the public needs to be able to see the posting document that I, or the document that I sent. But basically what I've done is I've, I've redlined a copy of the Royal, Library Foundation Investment, uh, and Investment Policy. And is there, is there a reason why this historical document is called the Stevens Memorial Library College Foundation?
I, I think they just made a mistake. I think that was Eaton Vance.
Yeah, I think that was, they were using some other template.
Yeah, I see. So I've now removed the word college from that. I can send another.
I know, I was wondering that.
I literally missed it. I didn't even, I didn't even, uh, see it until right now. It's funny. So what I've done basically is we, we, we voted the asset allocation and I did some language cleanup and changed some of the language to foot with what we've just voted on. But I don't want to talk about it now because it's, it's not a posted document. So I just want to let you know that I just emailed it to everybody and we can read it over at our leisure and have a discussion about it at the next meeting. I'll be happy to, um, talk to people about what I redlined and why on the next meeting.
That sounds good. Okay. Thank you.
And that's, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. That sounds good. We'll be looking for that. Uh, okay, next up is long-range planning. I have been trying to, um, update the action goals that we have in a big spreadsheet. So I am in the middle of that. But Stan, did you have something you want to talk about?
All I know is since, since we're going to be talking about it later in the agenda, why don't I just hold up? The only thing I would say is that, um.
Well, this is the later.
What's that?
This is the later now.
Oh, this is not the master plan item at the end of the agenda of new business?
Oh, okay. Whoops, I missed that. Okay.
Okay, so let me just say here that, um, we've, we've had some. Okay. So let me just say here that, um, we've, we've had some minimal discussion about the town master plan and the library's involvement in that. And so Ann and I will need to be taking a look at that um, and seeing how it might be incorporated into the revision to the long range plan. And in a minute, we'll be, I'll, I'll show you a little bit more information about that. And we can talk about that a little tonight and then maybe at our next meeting, we can talk more about it. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Good. So we'll move on then, because we'll just stay tuned. We'll be presenting that later. So old business, the town 375th anniversary, Eva, do you have anything to update us about with that?
So Eva and I, I have been, that's what we've been doing, texting back and forth here. When Eva unmute, she's not connecting with us.
Right.
I don't have anything set at this end to mute her, so I'm not sure why she's not, um, able to connect there.
Eva, you don't have a microphone on or off on your headphones, do you? Okay.
You want to just put something brief in the chat?
And maybe we can move on and then come back to this.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, oh, so Mark, the next thing is new business endowment funds, investment policy, but Mark, you already talked about that. Um, and then we were go, oh, this next one's Eva also. Martha and Charles Salisbury.
So Eva just held up her finger for a minute.
This happened to someone in my book group call last week. She was muted for like 45 minutes and all of a sudden she
Eva, maybe you could leave the meeting and come back. You know, just try that and see if that will reset you.
Yeah, just get out and then come back, right?
Yeah.
Kathleen, do you want to talk about the blinds?
I can, and Eva and I've had this conversation already, so she won't be missing anything. Uh, we've wanted to replace all the blinds in the building and we've tried, you know, a couple of different strategies to it. The, the last one was that we actually went to a curtain and windows covering company and asked them to give us an estimate of what it would look like. And, uh, based on the estimate, it seems pretty reasonable, actually more reasonable than we thought. And so it looks like we would be able to for $10,000 or a little bit less, replace all of the blinds in the building. We have a number of places where the blinds are broken. We have all of the blinds as really hard to clean. They're, they're terrible dust collectors. And so it's, as well as there being a very dark color, the new blinds would match the type of window covering that we used for the skylight. So it's a mesh that lets in light, but filters UV rays. And it's some material that Eva's worked with on projects and she recommends it as well. So the next step is for me to go back to the company who gave me an estimate and say, now that we've had an estimate, we're also serious about doing it. But, um, I didn't want to proceed with having them come in and do a more next official step without knowing that I had a budget for it.
Well, Kathleen, isn't this an expense that could come out of the state funds?
Well, it can.
Okay. So why shouldn't?
We had budgeted for our, from the endowment or something we talked about, or are we gonna do that now?
Well, we talked about furniture, right? I, I, this is, I'm not sure if we had a vote on blinds.
No, we didn't. That's why I brought it up separately. In general, we've, you know, when we can, we try to, you know, save the state aid funds for other things that we really would need, that we didn't have money for other places. And the trustees have funded things like furniture and painting and, you know, basic interior kinds of things. So it, it's a fair question to, to do it from either place.
Well, if, if it was an either or choice, Kathleen, we could either have blinds or furniture, which would we, which would we have?
Both.
I mean, the trustees are gonna pay for one.
Oh, why?
Or furniture, right? Which would you, whether they pay for?
Um, the furniture may be more, well, the furniture certainly will be more expensive eventually.
Eva.
Cause there's a lot more of it.
Eva, I saw like a, oh, pay for the blinds first, she said, the furniture later. Yeah, I think we really need the blinds, but we also really need furniture. So we haven't, I mean, my thinking is we haven't really, we've been putting a lot of stuff off for a lot of time. We have a good amount of money right now. So I say we kind of go for it and get this stuff done while we can. You know, with the building being pretty empty. That's my thought. Do we want to?
I think what we're, what we're, what I think we're trading off here is that for the first time, we're proposing a substantial budget and we haven't gotten to the, the allocation of that yet. So we haven't discussed about what the $35,000 would be divided up into. So before we start spending that money, I thought I, I wanted to discuss the whole allocation of how we could propose a unified budget and understand what the trade offs are for those funds.
Okay, Eva.
We, we've talked about a lot of things like improvements to the website, improvement to access to digital media, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and so I think we, we owe it to ourselves to have a conversation about unifying the budget and, and allocating it and then working from that allocation plan. Instead of, instead of a string of ad hoc requests.
Right. So could we, um, uh, I mean, is this something, Kathleen, that could wait till like the next meeting to be voted on or, and then in the meantime that we send out, you, you and Stan kind of came up with a initial budget and then we could all kind of.
Should we, should we just show that budget to everyone? I, I think I could probably do that if you want to.
And, you know, we've been talking about the, there's the fact that we have some found money in the state aid and that might be a perfect place for it. It's, it's available. It's there. It's rapid.
How much money do we have in the state aid account?
Um, give me a minute and I'll see if I can pull that up. Eva's gonna try and call in on the phone too, so I just sent her the phone.
Good idea.
Yes. It's wonderful when, when we suddenly remember we have more than one technology here. So let me go see. I should have that on one of my charts here.
It's like Eva's in a fishbowl.
That's frustrating.
Eva, it does show that you are muted. So make sure that on that little bar, you're not. Yeah, okay. Now try. Still can't hear you. Okay.
Gosh, that's weird. Kate, do you have a way of checking your internal microphone? I'm sure she's, oh, she's gonna call. Do you need the number?
Put the number in the chat.
Where is that number?
Yeah, hang on, I can.
It's 516-226-0170. And then the PIN is 75.
Oh, she says, hold on.
01 what?
0170 for the number.
Are you putting it in the chat, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want the PIN number?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Well, the other potential items coming up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could potentially be bathrooms. So we bathrooms, furniture, website and blinds are like the big ticket items. But can some of the, I mean.
We're also gonna have legal expenses too.
Oh, yeah. Big money, big money.
Well, some money.
So I think, I think we need to look at this furniture and supplies in such a way that we tick off some of the things. I think the blinds are a quick hit and they're only $10,000. I think we need to consider the furniture and the implications of COVID on what we're looking to do. So we might decide that we want to spend smaller amounts of money initially on some, not quick hits, but rather some initial purchases of furniture and then continue to make purchases as time goes by. So I do think these lines are gonna make a big difference. And we should go forward with that.
It, it, I, I, I don't disagree with that at all, Eva. I do think this is a perfect sort of straightforward expense that would be, I think, uh, a, a good expenditure of state aid funds. And then we can start to think about using trustee funds for furniture, both initially and over the long haul. So since the blinds are sort of a one-time specific expense, I think that might be a good place to spend some of our state aid money. Kathleen was gonna tell us our balance, right?
Yes. So, um, uh, currently we have, I think about $80,000 in there. We'll have some bills coming out of that. Um, but I don't have an estimate for what the bills are right now. But we have been saving it for a couple of, actually, we've been saving it for nearly four years in anticipation that there would be times when there were problems. And part, that's part of why I have kept it that way for years like this.
I, I, I certainly appreciate that, but one might argue that the blinds are a problem and that's where we could use some of this money. So just saying, that seems like a perfectly appropriate use of the state aid funds. And, you know, we always have, if you ever, if there, a problem ever arose, we, we still have the endowment funds to cover you. So, you know, there's a much larger savings account that you can draw upon if there was a real problem, whatever that problem would be. So I think this is a, this would be a very appropriate expenditure for us to use the state aid money.
You know, I, um, we've had some discussion about the furniture and the fact that the library is closed or, you know, mostly, mostly closed due, due to COVID. And that, you know, might slow the need for new furniture, but I, does that same, uh, logic apply to the blinds as well?
You mean, we don't need to do it now, but we do.
Well, I mean, if no, if nobody's sitting there, we need the shade.
We need to go forward on this stuff. We've been waiting and waiting.
We really do. And you know.
So go ahead, Eva.
I was gonna say, in terms of the furniture, we do need to go back and look after COVID, how we might want to adjust what we were thinking about doing. We had a pretty good plan that we were ready to go forward with. But I think the library, just like every other office across the country, has to revisit what they're doing and how they're furnishing their space. So I think we're lucky that we didn't go forward with the furniture before this happened. So that we can really react in the appropriate way. However, the blinds, I think we should just do it now.
Well, we've been putting that off for a really long time.
And it's a good, it might be a good time to do it because it's, you know, normally it's like disruptive for patrons in the library. Now it's not, right? So, you know, the library is basically vacant. So now is the best time to probably do a job like that, just like the redecorating.
Oh, yeah, the bathrooms.
Or the lighting, the lighting.
Yeah, we should come up, well, the thing is though, I mean, did, wasn't a lot of the, weren't a lot of the chairs in the furniture taken, the upholsterers chairs were all taken out, weren't they?
Yes.
So I can't, good. So we're not gonna be putting, I mean, they really need a replacement. So we will really need some new chairs when the library reopens, which could potentially be certainly within fiscal year 2022, I would hope. So I think we need to figure out, like, just budgeting.
So, so let me just, let me just throw out one more wrinkle here. Um, you know, the town has got money and has paid for things that are COVID related. This could in fact be a COVID related expense. Oh, by the way, and this could be something the town might be able to pay for and get reimbursed for because we had to replace this because the other chairs just didn't meet the health protocols, right? So, you know, I would, I would suggest that, um, Ms. Casey might put that on her things to do list to think about, right? Could we get reimbursed for some new furniture because our old furniture does not meet the health standards, right? This is a health issue.
It's my understanding, we've exhausted all of our CARES Act funding, but I certainly can check with Lynn Savage, the finance director.
Well, it just, if there were funding available, we would qualify. I guess.
The floor was coming. Yeah.
So, yeah, I wouldn't be a bit surprised if there wasn't more money down the road somewhere. So just something, something to think about. I mean, we might as well, because that's one of the reasons why we're doing it, right? Because of COVID, right? Just saying.
Well, we kind of need to think about all of it in the big picture and what's gonna be funded from where.
But I, but I, I'm with you, Eva. I think moving forward on the blinds right now is not a bad idea. You know, the library is basically, you know, it's easy for them to get in there. It's easy for them to do the work and not disruptive or anything. So that's, that's good. So, yeah, I'm okay.
And we got a good price. The price is only gonna go up. Yeah, no, I think we should do it. So, so what do you think then? The state aid money? Is that something we have to vote on? Or is that your, just your decision, Kathleen?
I think it's primarily the director's decision, but we've always tried to do this in conscience. I guess what I would rather say at this stage, I, I didn't realize that Mark and the others had been working on a new unified budget. My impression was that they were looking at the budget for FY '22. But if it's for this year's budget, then maybe we really need to sit and have those discussions in general, like Mark said, and look at it as a complete picture. If we can arrange some meetings between now and the next meeting, one more month is not gonna make that much difference, but I think it would be good to have a bigger picture that looked across all of the funds.
Well, but I think, I, I don't know. It concerns me putting stuff off because I just, I, I do think that maybe we need to do it at the same time. Decide where the 10,000 is gonna come from right now and move forward with that. And then do we, have we spent, so, I mean, we could divide this stuff up between this year, which ends June 30th and fiscal year '22. But do we have, don't we have money left that we didn't spend, like, you know, that we talked about spending from the endowment that we did not spend yet? Or do we not really come up with a plan on that?
I mean, we really don't have a plan. That's a challenge. We haven't had a plan. I mean, we, we've had a rough spending rate of 10,000 a year, which, you know, we spent 8,000 so far.
We should, but we have voted in, okay, we're gonna spend this money here, this money there for certain requests like Kathleen. So I think we look at that and we try to get a better idea for the budget for fiscal 2022 first, endowment spending. But in the meantime, I really feel like we should not put the blinds off. So how are we gonna pay for those?
Well, again, I would, I would suggest that we use state aid money unless, you know, there's an expense that you anticipate, Kathleen, that's gonna need a lot of that money. Because we're, you just said we're getting more money from the state soon, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So we should be getting a payment, um, the first payment. They, they always split the award into two payments. So the payment could, you know, not come at all or it could be less because that money depends on the state getting the revenue that they're projecting.
Yep.
But the first payment is pretty much a guarantee that that amount's going to arrive.
And that's what?
23,000.
So you would have more than $100,000 in your account?
Well, but we'll be paying. Well, but we'll be paying some other bills out of there, but it, it should still be a healthy balance.
How big, do you have any guess on how big the other bills are?
I don't at the moment. I wasn't forecasting that before coming to the meeting.
Sure, sure.
Well, I mean, I, I think if we do, if we do, you know, plan that if, if the blinds are paid for out of the state aid money, then we plan to cover the other expenses that are gonna be coming up out of the endowment. So, as we do have a, but, you know, some other big items that we were talking about doing from the endowment, like the furniture. So I think, given that there's all that money and there's another block of state aid money coming, I mean, my, I'm, I'm leaning towards the state aid money personally.
Yeah, I would agree.
So.
So do we have to vote on that or have a discussion or?
I think that's Kathleen's discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Kathleen, I think that you're, you're hesitating about that for some reason.
No, it's just that I was expecting it to be paid by the endowment fund. So now I'll go back and I'll look at what else I'm doing, that's all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and if, if after you look at that, you're, you know, you have expenses that are large enough so that you think that's gonna be a problem, you know, let us know before we spend that money, but.
Yeah, we could decide at the next meeting that.
To do something else, right?
So maybe we just decide that if the money doesn't come out of state aid, we'll cover it. I don't know, just so that you can move forward with it.
Let's let Kathleen look at her expenditures that she's anticipating, plus the $23,000 she's gonna be getting. And then, let's, you know, and then see where the $10,000 fits into that picture.
I, I think one thing, you know, we're, we're having this discussion about a budget that we haven't shared with, with the board or, you know, you guys have talked about some budget plan. I think we really need, I, I think you can go ahead with the blinds and get them out of the state funding, which would, is one way to go. But I, you know, it's hard for me without having a discussion about what are we gonna do with the $35,000 a year to say, yeah, we should spend it on the blinds or we should spend it on something else. So I really think we need to get into that discussion.
So, shall I, shall I share that budget on the screen here? Shall I try to do that?
Well, let's, let's, let's bring, I think we need to circulate it as document for the public to see.
I think, right. And I think we need to, everyone to look at it and think about it before our next meeting. And maybe we, people think about what, like, we think, and Kathleen, you too, what we want money for, to spend money on in the coming year. I know you've already done some of that in the budget that you already did, but I think we need to think about, like, seriously, you know, we need to, and we talked about landscaping, we talked about furniture and new bathrooms and all of that kind of thing. So we need to figure that all of it out, I think.
And but when you, when, when we distribute this budget and people look at it, the things, the thing we all need to be aware of is that even though we've talked about $35,000, spending $35,000 in one fiscal year, the amount of money that would be available for furniture or blinds is considerably less than $35,000. Because as you recall, monies have to be spent for other things, right? Staff betterment, books. So it's not just as simple as saying, okay, we're gonna take $35,000 and spend it for blinds and furniture. That's not the way that's gonna work. So when you look at the budget, you'll see sort of what that means. And if we want to start making expenditures against, you know, larger expenditures in the unrestricted category, you know, we may get to the point where we've spent all our, all of that category up for a few years and don't have anything left and can't do anything. Like for furniture. So let's say we spend $20,000 or $30,000 on furniture, which would be a couple of years of allocation for not, for unrestricted.
So maybe we better hurry up and spend it before June 30th.
Well, I.
Let it be between this year and next year.
There's another way to look at this too, cuz the money, and I'm, I'm trying to be neutral on this, but, but the money isn't neutral. The money in the state aid fund is cash. The money in the endowment is invested. So when you, you know, you, you can take as, whenever we take money out of the investment, then we are, you know, stunting for future growth. So that's something I think you have to consider is when you come up with spending money, state aid versus our, our endowment or other sources, that they aren't equal. You know, the money we have in the endowment is invested, as we've been talking about earlier. So I think that has to be a factor as well.
That money makes money. The state aid money does not.
Couldn't have said it better.
Right.
Hopefully it makes money.
Okay.
Okay, so Kathleen, if it's okay with you, it sounds like we wanna take that money out of the blind.
Yeah. What you need for other things, that, that becomes a problem, but you could let us know.
So you'll let us know if, if you feel.
And, and Stan, it might be helpful, before you circulate the budget, to get a more precise quote on the legal estimates.
Okay, yeah.
It's the only other thing that I can think of that we don't have a firm number on.
So Mary, if you get even a rough idea, let me know, okay?
I will. I think we also have to sort of like, just my two cents here, consider it as two buckets. So, I mean, money on legal fees and money towards the website are going to generate, hopefully, additional income. I mean, I've spent part of today looking at other libraries and, and the way they have it set up. And it's, it's super easy for a person who, you know, feels strongly about their public library, you know, to, to make that donation quickly, either through PayPal or whatever. So, you know, we, we have to, you have to spend a little to get something in return.
I agree.
And there's, there's also the argument though that, you know, a nice place in the community, you know, makes people want to fund it additionally, you know. So I don't, I don't think we should let, you know, I'm, I'm fully on board with the state funding for the blinds and everything. At the same time, it's like, we need to maintain that library. You know, it is, it's a community center. You want it to be nice so that people feel good with, with gifting to it, you know, so that, you know, for their children's sakes, for everybody's sake, so.
I agree.
People wanna go there.
You know, I hadn't really been.
Exactly.
I hadn't really been thinking about that, Mary, but, yeah, I mean, we could get people to donate to the, you know, the trustees of funds, right, the, the endowment, to support the library, right?
Exactly.
Good point, Mary, good point.
Yes, that is. All right, so everybody, Stan, if you send out the, the budget or, everybody.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mary first and then I'll, I'll, I'll update that and send it out.
Right, okay.
All right.
Some explanation.
Okay, so well, well, so for the next meeting, old business or, I don't know, new business, maybe old business, we'll go over that budget for 2022. And in the meantime, I think we move forward with the blinds.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just wanna make clear that my impression is that we're talking about the spending, the $35,000 in FY21, which is right now.
Oh, no, I thought it was for FY22, yes or no?
That, that's why I'm asking, because I'm doing two different things.
So we've already spent $8,000, right? So it'll be less than 35.
Yeah, but will you, is that for '21 or '22? Like now till, you know? No, that budget, Stan, that you were working on.
That's for FY22, not for FY.
Okay.
Yeah, it's for '22, it's not for '21.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
So we still have $23,000? Oh, it's not, so we, we didn't have it for this year, we just have it for next.
Starting next year.
I mean, we did spend money on other things that we voted on, like.
Yeah, I mean, we spent money and we could spend more money, but this budget is specifically for the next fiscal year.
And we, and we also last meeting talked about having a budget, doing a budget for every year.
Correct, yeah, no, no, we should do that.
In November, so that Kathleen.
Absolutely.
Use it to plan for town budget. Okay, let's move on, it's getting late. Okay, Stan, master plan?
Yeah, just let me, let me, let me make a quick statement about that. So I did put together a summary of excerpts from the town master plan that talks about the library. And I will, will be, we can send that out to everyone and let you take a look. The most important thing to take a look at is in the, back of the master plan, there are 103, the master plan calls and strategies, think of, think of them as big action items. The library actually is involved in a half a dozen of them. Some fairly focused, fairly specifically focused on the library itself. You might take a look at that. I, I've excerpted those and highlighted them so you'll, you should be able to easily see which ones those are. Those are the ones I think we really wanna talk about and we wanna think about how we incorporate those ideas into also the long-range plan and, you know, as we go forward. So, you know, I, I would respectfully suggest that, try to take a look at that material before our next meeting and then we can have a discussion about how the library, and, you know, it's really us, the trustees, and, you know, Kathleen and Cindy and others, you know, wanna try to respond to some of these action items that are in the, in the master plan. So, I mean, it's, it's not, they're all good, but, you know, they just, we'd have to think about how we wanna deal with them. So, anyway, and that, you know, the library got some very good press in the master plan, is a very important resource to the town, you'll see all of that. Kathleen and, and I'll put in some good information about the library in the plan and you'll see that too. So I think it'll be interesting for you to take a look and then we can have a good discussion next time.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, anybody have anything else? Do we need to have, Rob, we need to do an action item list?
Did, did we talk about the Salisbury plan?
Yeah, now that I can speak, I wanted to say something.
Oh, right.
So the, I've talked with Kathleen a little bit about the tree. I think I'm, I'm talking with the garden, I think it'll be a combination of maybe three organizations who can get together and do something substantial. So, you know, not, not just a little two-foot tree, but some, something that, that's attached to it and that will survive well. So the question just is exactly where it would be, where it would go, and what the right type of tree is. So I'm working on that and we'll report back when I know a little more, okay?
Now, is the tree gonna be planted? Where's the, where might the tree be planted?
So Kathleen and I talked about that, that's the good question. You know, it would be wonderful if it was at the, the entrance at Davis Street across from the park, but there have been many trees planted there that have failed to thrive. So, so, and as Kathleen's in my conversation, we veered away from the tree and started talking about the read room and things like that. So I don't.
Started to come to a conclusion.
The read room, we were just talking about the read room. So our conversation sort of veered in that direction and we stopped talking about the tree. So we didn't ultimately come up.
Another item we talked about was landscaping. That was, that's kind of been on the radar too, the new parking landscaping. So to me, that's like an outdoor plan, so maybe we need to figure that out. And maybe the tree needs to go on the other side. Plus, we're gonna be doing the front steps and that's gonna be kind of a new.
And then, yeah, and removing the walls that serve no purpose in the front. So perhaps that's where this tree should go.
Right, so I think we need to figure that out, but.
Right, right, right.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, so we're taking that under advisement.
Right. Oh, we have a lot to do, okay. All right, anything else, anybody? Was there one other thing that, oh, no, that was the blinds that Eva was gonna talk about.
No, I think we're good.
Okay, next meeting date, March 23rd. And everybody has their assignments.
Yes, all right, move to adjourn.
Do we want to have a list of action items? Cindy, have you been doing like this or stuff? I mean, I took a lot of notes, so I could send out what I think people need to do.
I think that would be helpful if we had an action item list.
Yeah.
Don't you keep one, Cindy?
Yeah, I, I have been, yes, yeah, but I can pull it together.
Sharing that with us.
Yep.
Yeah, I can email you what I kind of had down too.
Yeah, I could check in with you, Anne, but yeah, I could pull together where we are, you know.
That would be good.
Okay, all right, should we adjourn? Someone wanna move?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
I did.
Was that Eva? Thank you, Eva.
Okay, all in favor, I'll go first, Anne Kavanaugh, yes?
Stan, yes.
Mark, yes.
Yeah, Bill Duffa, yes.
Mary Desha, yes.
Okay, unanimous.